If we could please rise and trustee Foster is going to lead us in the invocation and then we'll join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious Father, we are so grateful for this opportunity to pause and to breathe. It's a busy day, we've got a lot on this agenda, but we just want to acknowledge you. We want to invite you into this meeting, Father. We want your discernment, we need wisdom, and we need your blessings, Father. We pray for this college, we pray for its staff, its faculty, its administrators, all those that have one mission in mind, and that is to encourage education, to prepare others for this journey of life. We pray your blessings upon our military. We pray especially for those in the Panhandle and in Georgia, all the way up the east coast, that were affected by this storm, Father. We just, we pray that you will help them to rebuild, that you will give them peace, a sense of peace, as they, as they really embark on this incredible rebuilding. We pray for the colleges that were affected, Lord. We just pray your blessings upon this meeting today. Give the trustees wisdom and discernment, Father. We pray all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we'll start the meeting as usual. Chairman Stone Cypher is unavailable this morning, so you can bear with me. So our first announcement, Dr. Cooper?
Yes, it's my pleasure. Good morning, Chair Cole, members of the board, and Dr. Williams. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Sabrina Crawford. She is the new Associate Vice President of Institutional Effectiveness and Academic Services. She holds a doctorate degree in Curriculum Teaching, Learning, and Leadership from Northeastern University, a master's in Curriculum and Instruction from St. Michael's College, and she also has a bachelor's degree in Elementary Education in English from Boston College. She has served as the president of the Florida Association of Institutional Research for two years and has presented across the country on various topics associated with student success. It's our pleasure to welcome her, Dr. Crawford.
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I feel blessed to be working at an institution where everyone is really working towards student success, and we couldn't have a better group of people to be doing this work. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We're on to comments, and may I ask any of the other board members if you all have comments this morning that you'd like to share? Anything? Anything? Moving on to Dr. Williams.
Yes, I want to acknowledge the college family for the work they have already done to help Florida Gulf Coast College and Chapola, Chapola College. Right now, both institutions are closed indefinitely, and so they have been hit very hard. The eye of the storm went directly through their towns, and so we're asking all of us to keep them in our thoughts and prayers. The work we've been doing with economic mobility is starting to sincerely catch on. We've been with the Board of County Commissioners, the Clearwater Chamber. We're having our business convening in Clearwater this week. The public policy luncheon is tomorrow, and we've been participating with the National Science Foundation regarding our desires and focus on that, so I'm really proud of that. We also just received word that we received the, from the U.S. Department of Education, an award for cybersecurity. We have a grant for about $83,000 for the next two years for us to improve cybersecurity and upgrade what we're doing to make that something very positive. So I'm real proud of that. We also have Spirit Week, which is the first that we've done at the college coming up in two weeks, where all of our campuses will celebrate St. Petersburg College and who we are, and we'll bring our alumni back on and spend some time together. So I have information for the board on Spirit Week. And next week, three board members are joining me at the American Association for Colleges' Trustees Retreat in New York. So I want to thank the board members who are attending so that we can learn more about what's happening on the national level. And that would be my report for this week.
Thank you. And call the meeting formally to order. And we do have two public comment cards. The first, Dominic Blanco. Mr. Blanco?
No. Oh.
Greetings, Board of Trustee Members. My name is Felix Negron. I have come today representing my fellow dual enrollment students at St. Petersburg College. We recently discovered that St. Petersburg College may no longer be accepting dual enrollment students out of the district of Pinellas County, and this would not affect only myself standing before you, but over 60 other students residing in the college right now. We have come today to discuss this possible change with you in hopes that you could possibly understand how this goes against the mission statement of SPC, as it would prevent us from achieving success in economic mobility and academic excellence and engagement. Speaking not only for myself, but for all my fellow dual enrollment students, I am very proud to be a student of SPC. If this change were to occur, however, therefore removing us from the college, it will remove, excuse me, many clear pathways for professional growth and resulting in ongoing opportunities for leadership, engagement, and advancement at SPC. I'm hoping you will take into consideration these students would no longer feel empowered to succeed and consider a more lenient way if change must occur rather than simply removing these students from the campus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, going into more detail, it would be my associate, Mr. Dominic Blanco.
Oh, perfect. Welcome.
Hello, Board. My name is Dominic Blanco. I have been a full-time dual enrollment student at St. Petersburg College for the past three years now. I'm currently only one semester away from achieving my goal of receiving my associate's degree here at SPC. I have had an entire plan set forth for the upcoming spring semester of classes I wanted to take to set myself up to reach the university level, and then I got an email on Monday, September 24th, that these plans may really come crashing down due to these possible changes. I would possibly be forced to transfer to Hillsborough Community College, risking losing credits, and I would only have a few days to decide about my academic future. I could lose credits, and if that were the case, it could prevent me from achieving my associate's degree on time and reaching the university, the university level. I understand that changes have to occur, but please take into consideration that many of these students, including myself, have been, have been a part of the student body here at SPC, have made many friends, have built great relationships with amazing professors, and see themselves as proud students of SPC. I am hopeful that rather than give us no time to figure out our academic future, that you will consider grandfathering in the students who are already here at SPC and have plans set forth to graduate with the school or allow us very close to finishing, like, like myself, to complete our degrees here at SPC rather than being forced to transfer schools and risk putting our academic future in question. This goes against the mission statement of SPC. I will no longer be in position to achieve success and economic mobility through academic excellence and engagement if I am removed from SPC with almost zero notice. I am hopeful you will institute a transitional period or grandfather in your students who are already here and have plans for their future. I will be proud to graduate as, as, as an SPC student, and I'm hopeful that you will allow this to occur. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you both. I think the trustees, we also received some correspondence in our St. Pete College email, and I'll let Dr. Williams, if you desire, but there is no intention to close the dual enrollment program to people, those outside of Pinellas County, so let's make that clear. Any, any changes that may occur based on the new state law and policies associated with it have not yet been determined by the administration, so, but it will not include excluding wholeheartedly students from out of the community, so. For the board members, there's a financial question about the reimbursements that the administration's looking at, so. But thank you all for being here and bringing it to our attention. We'll open our meeting back up, and our review and approval of the minutes. Any comments or corrections from the board?
Move there. We accept the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And our monthly reports. Ms. Gardner?
Good morning. I don't have a report this morning.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Ulrich?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Dr. Williams, members of the board. I am Dr. Shannon Ulrich, the president of the Faculty Governance Organization here at SPC. I'm here to give you an update on the happenings of FGO, including some of the things that we accomplished last year, a slight change in our FGO leadership at the campus level, and the goals of this year. Also, last year I started a tradition of concluding with a highlight of faculty, and I'm going to continue that tradition this year. I like to think of FGO as a formalized system that allows advocacy for our faculty. It allows faculty to have a voice in college-wide decision-making processes, and it allows faculty to offer insights in policies and procedures currently in place. Over this past year with Dr. Williams, it really has been an opportunity for engagement and involvement in upper-level conversations. Last year, my major goal for FGO was to build better bridges of communication among faculty and faculty, as well as among faculty and administration, and I believe some of the outcomes of the 2017-2018 year reflect the progress that we've made in this endeavor. For instance, FGO Senate worked with Dr. Cooper's Encourageo to devise a modified drop ad period allowing students to register past the Sunday before the start of the semester, which has had positive and fa, excuse me, positive impacts on enrollment. We've worked with Dr. Cooper to get 18180 every other year for a 10-year, 36 ECH faculty instead of every three years, with the support of the department and the dean's permission, of course. FGO worked with SEDO Leads and the OLS team to update the institutional continuity plan after Irma came through and shed some light on some of the flaws of our existing plan. I worked with Dr. Cooper and online faculty who proctored online exams, excuse me, who offer proctored online exams, to move our spring online proctored midterms to Week Eight instead of basically what's considered Week Ten, which is the weekend after spring break. So now our fall and spring semesters actually align, and we're hoping that this will have an impact on student success taking those midterms, and also, we hope that our students can now enjoy spring break instead of worrying about studying the entire time. We also had a small but mighty team of faculty that forged a new academic integrity policy that more closely aligns with the academic appeals process and puts final integrity appeals with the dean instead of the associate provost. This allows academics, including integrity issues, to remain in the academic affairs department. This process was vetted through the campus FGO's, FGO Senate, the chairs, and the dean's council. We also worked to get the FGO SharePoint site up and running. It now houses agendas and meeting minutes of all the campus meetings in our FGO Senate, and it includes all our proposals and resolutions, and it is open for faculty as well as SPC employees to view. As for our FGO leadership, we definitely could not be a successful organization without the direction and leadership of our FGO campus chairs. You should recognize most of the names on the list. Returning, we have Melanie Payden, the Clearwater Campus, Carol Weidman at the St. Pete Gibbs, I skipped Jeff, Jeff Briggs at the Health Education Center, and at Tarpon Springs, we have Jim Wallace. You should notice a new name on that list instead of Sunita Kumari, who was with us all last year. We much appreciate all her time, efforts, and energies. Now we have, we are welcoming Lori King to the FGO team representing the Seminole Campus. The FGO chairs lead campus meetings each month. The chairs, along with elected senators of each campus, meet monthly at our FGO Senate meetings, and the chairs and I meet with Dr. Williams on a monthly basis. In addition, we have the opportunity to be on various executive-level committees, giving faculty representation, a voice in the institutional change at the beginning stages of things moving here at SPC instead of at that implementation step. Now, I appreciate communication is a two-way street, so we've also been inviting executive leadership to our FGO Senate meetings. Last year, we had frequent visitors, and so far this year, we've had Dr. Connor, Dr. Caloric, and we even have Dr. Cooper on the calendar for our February meeting. So as with last year, this year, I'm still going to be working on that communication. I want to keep it going, and I plan to have that commitment to communication throughout the year. Before I looked at more specific goals for FGO this year, I went to the SEDO board to discuss more on the learning experience. We collectively decided FGO would handle more of the policy and procedure pieces of the learning experience, because it is a big job, and SEDO would deal with more of the strategies and opportunities for the learning experience. They've actually already started working on some of those opportunities. We had an engaging syllabus webinar recently. A lot more details on what's going on with the learning experience will be forthcoming at the next meeting. We, we hope to bring you our measures, what we've been doing, and what we plan to do at that meeting. I did also want to let you guys know that we are, a group of faculty is working on the guidelines for the periodic course review, and we have a list of volunteers to start up our SSI review committee. That first meeting is tentatively scheduled for early November. I also wanted to let you know that the, the planning committee got together and all agreed, let's do this thing again. So the SPC Titan Trot 5K is on again for 2019, and this is my formal invitation/mandate to be there on February 2nd at the Clearwater Campus. Let me get some exercise. Now on to our faculty highlights. I chose to focus on the theme of community. While there are many examples of our faculty engaged with the community, I wanted to present our best-of-the-bay nominees. These nominees emphasize two major points. One, we have incredibly talented faculty working here at SPC, and two, our community recognizes it. Our faculty were associated with four nominations, and I just want to go through the list really quickly. Brandy Stark at the Downtown Midtown Campus was nominated for Best Maker. She creates ghost art and history tours. She's a photographer, and she also works with metal and makes polymer clay art, so she is one of our multi-talented faculty. Sherear Greer at Seminole Campus was nominated for Best Fiction Writer. She is a novelist and also writes short fiction. And we had David Manson coming in with two nominations. He's from our Gibbs Campus. He was nominated for Best Local Jazz Ensemble for the work that he does with his jazz orchestras. And I also wanted to give you one more highlight. This is a highlight showing you a event where we had 61 SPC-related individuals that went out to the Moccasin Lake Nature Park in Clearwater on September 15th. So this is a recent example. This group was led by Dr. Aaron Gergen, Professor Kelly Stickrath, Professor Eric Tucker, and Dr. Dale, the Associate Provost at the Tarpon Springs Campus. They represented several student clubs, as well as the Tarpon Springs Ethics Department, and the volunteers there worked to garden, they worked on the bird-of-prey enclosures, cleaned up the boardwalk and trail, and they also cleaned up the inside and outside of the classroom. Again, there are many examples of faculty working out in the community with their students, but I wanted to show this one because I was impressed by the turnout, and it was relatively recent as well. So with that, I turn it over to you all for any questions or comments.
Madam Chair, I have a question. I just, I was wondering, I'm looking at this list, and you have Clearwater Health Education, St. Pete Gibbs, Seminole, Tarpon, but no Downtown, Midtown, or Allstate are represented on FGO?
So based on our constitution, they don't actually have formal chairpersons, but we do have senators that attend our Senate meetings, and they have informal faculty members as well. So EpiCenter has Downtown, Midtown, Vet Tech, they all have senators that are represented at the FGO Senate level.
Okay. Why wouldn't, why wouldn't they have a chair? I'm just asking.
The FGO...
I know you have a constitution.
Yeah, the FGO constitution states that you have to have a certain number of faculty at the center to actually have the chair.
And what's that number?
I can't remember off the top of my head.
Please. I wouldn't understand how Downtown, Midtown wouldn't at least meet that number.
And a lot of my communications, when we have some of the broader things at the dean's council, I include those senators in my communication so that they can relay information to their faculty.
But the senators don't have the full rights of a person that is FGO representative in the leadership, right? They don't have...
They have senators, but they don't have a chairperson.
They don't have a chairperson.
Correct.
So, and I guess I asked that question because while Allstate is now under Dr. Carver, their issues are much different, and they may have somebody that's a senator, but they really don't have anybody in the leadership here of this group. So that's why I asked that question. So if you could give me that information back, please?
Any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Ulrich, for all of your leadership and guidance the past two years. I know that you've worked very hard on each of these goals and strategies, so thank you. And I know that Chair Stone Cypher will be challenging us all to move to February again, so.
I expect that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
And Thriese McFarlith, the foundation update? Oh, on alumni engagement? Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped you down. See, that's what they get for putting me in charge today. Ms. Williams. Sorry, Ms. Williams, I didn't mean to skip over you and Dr. Crawford. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Williams, who just stepped away. My name is Kimberly R. Williams. It is a privilege to sit as vice chair for Career Service Employee Council. I'm standing in for Ms. Jean Trimble, our chair. At the last presentation to the board, Ms. Trimble shared our initiatives of revitalizing the council. Today, I will like to provide an accomplished recap, share our next initiatives and approaching The Career Service Employee Steering Committee members have completed the bylaws to include new mission statement, objectives, goals, added a new subcommittee, and revised processes to strengthen leadership roles, collaboration, and commitment of the council. Our bylaws are now in the review phase of the full council, which consists of 581 budgeted career service employees. Thereafter, by approval of the full council and officers, the bylaws will post on our CSEC SharePoint site. The onboarding guide is still on the working board. It will provide new steering committee members clarity of the council, purpose, and roles. Our next initiatives will revitalize our presence and activity. The Career Service Employee Council has a marketing and website subcommittee, and we have projects that are designed for recruitment, meeting awareness, and creating a culture of steady communications. We were encouraged by Dr. Williams to inquire about a student intern, and in doing so, we were assigned a student from the Digital Arts Program. He is working with Toby Sharp, CSEC Marketing and Website Subcommittee Chair. Toby and subcommittee members are collaborating with SPC's marketing team to ensure projects are in line with SPC marketing requirements. So far, we have created a webpage, so now you can find us under the Friends and Partners and SPC Leaders, Leadership. We will continue to work with the assigned intern on several projects, which include an informational poster, which encourage, excuse me, encouraging involvement, driving interaction, and the importance of career service employee success. And this is to be placed on campuses and break rooms in various areas. Another project is a survey banner on the CSEC SharePoint site, Your Voice Matters, to engage career service employees, submission of ideas, concerns, and questions. A third project is recruiting nominations of council officers, and this will be in an announcement format, and also a listening post scheduler to allow meeting locations, dates, and times to be posted so that career service employees know when those are happening. Our upcoming events, we, at this Discovery Day, we will have a guest speaker, Ms. Tremeka Benjamin. She is the CEO of Swim Digital, and her topic will be Building Hope Under Reconstruction. We'll have an exciting and interacting table and information session that is open to all. One of the other challenges that we had by Dr. Williams to expand our leadership and to get, to get out what career service employees done more on a state level, so we were able to compose a proposal to the Association of Florida Colleges, and that proposal was accepted. So the Career Service Employee Executive Board will be presenting in November on the topic of career service employees, our hidden figures in Florida colleges. In conclusion, the council will continue being open, collaborating with leaders, and promoting career service employee success and interest. Are there any questions?
Colleagues, thank you so much, Ms. Williams, and thanks to you and Ms. Trimble for all of your hard work.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. Now, Dr. Crawford, sorry about that. I skipped to the next section of the agenda.
That was quite all right. Good morning, Dr. Williams. Happy Bosses' Day. I am Chair and members of the board, Sabrina Crawford. I'm here today to give you a review of the impact of Senate Bill 1720 in response to a question that was raised several months ago in this room. Just to kind of review, so Senate Bill 1720 proposed that all students who entered ninth grade in 2003 or 2004 or after into a public Florida high school and received a Florida standard high school diploma or active military members no longer had to sit for a college preparatory exam to determine if they required additional services to meet college readiness. They were allowed to go directly into gateway courses, and so this obviously presented an issue for the college that we've been working to, over the last five years, to kind of remedy. What we did for, in the beginning, was we developed a prediction model to determine whether or not students would be placed into a category of dev ed recommended, dev ed strongly recommended, or likely college-ready. And these categories allowed advisors to meet with students to best help them choose should they take developmental ed courses or should they go directly into gateway courses, again, being their choice. In addition, we had faculty members who were providing supplemental tools to make sure students were having the opportunities to support their success, and we had a wide variety of different course offerings that, over the last five years, we've been working on. So what does this actually mean? When we look at the cost of Senate Bill 1720, and I, granted, this slide is a little bit busy, so bear with me as I try to work through it. So we looked at two different sets of data. The first was our developmental education courses and also our gateway math and English. And if you follow along with just the green lines in both of these, you'll note that the level of student semester hours, or what we call SSH, has been steadily decreasing for our developmental courses, all the way down to 63% if you look at the comparison between 2012 and 2013, which was in a year that was entirely prior to Senate Bill 1720 to last year. You would think, therefore, that students were saying, great, awesome, let's go directly into gateway math and English, but as you can see from the green line in the second set of, of graphs, that's not the case. In fact, they're, the last two years have shown a little bit of a decrease, so students are actually opting to just forego those courses and take other courses instead, from what the data is showing. We looked at one other metric, and that was the comparison of how many SSH or student semester hours completely taught at the college in comparison to the total, and that's that pink line, and you'll see again that developmental education courses have a steadily decrease, whereas gateway math and English has really held solid at 7%. And finally, a third thing that we wanted to look at, and again, this is an estimate, we took all student semester hours, and we, and we looked at that from a point of view of a student being in-state resident, in which case they're taking courses at $111.75 per semester hour, and calculated that amount. And you'll see that if you did a comparison between the 2012 to the 2017 year, just that year alone, the decrease was actually of $3.6 million of lost revenue to the college. And if you look at that loss over the five... And if you look at that loss over the five years, you're looking at $11.6 million. Again, just a rough estimate. But of course, obviously, the cost and the loss of student semester hours is in the only way that this was impacting our students. We looked at our Learning Resources Center and said, okay, well, how are students actually utilizing these Learning Resources Centers? And you'll actually notice that from 2012 to 2017, there has been an increase in the usage. But when we looked at those students, those flex students who are opting not to take our recommendation, their decreases have actually been most noted for our black African-American student body. Our Hispanic student body, on the other hand, has been showing increases over the course of those years. We wanted to take a brief look at each one of those areas, math, writing, and reading. And you'll see here in the blue columns, again, that's kind of showing the difference between the fact that students are not taking our developmental math courses. It's actually a change in about 67%. And they're not going into our gateway math because we're only having an increase of about 4%. The one kind of thing to note on this slide that I think is a beacon of hope for us, if you look down underneath our flex developmental education students who are not taking our recommendations, it's highlighted in green, and our black African-American students, they're actually showing that they've regained ground over the last five years. They're now back at the same point that they were prior to 1720, when you compare them to their ethnic group. So that really speaks to the amount of work that our faculty members and our advisors have been doing. Again, when we look at our writing courses, we're noticing that those students who are not taking our recommendations are faring the worse. In some cases, it's over 21% worse. And the one thing that we are noticing, however, that our Hispanic students, they are probably, they are actually exceeding the overall body of students in that flex ed group. So that's the one beacon of hope in this group. Finally, our reading courses are showing a similar trend. I'm highlighting, again, our Hispanic student group because, again, they are either equal or exceeding their actual entirety of the flex ed student group. We looked at one last thing, and this was to compare our scores with the Florida college system as a whole. They produce this report every year. In fact, we have been sending this report to the state every year since they passed this bill. And the only small difference between these numbers, just to make sure that you're aware, when the state actually measures their numbers, they measure from summer, fall, and spring. And we always measure ours, fall, spring, summer, so there's a slight difference. But you can see that we're slightly behind the state average, but we're not really so far off to make things worrisome. In fact, there have been several areas in which the state has actually promoted what we've been doing and has been quite interested in some of the success measures that we've been having. So just some noteworthy observations. Obviously, the difference between those students who are leaving the developmental education courses, they're not going into our gateway courses, and that's been shown by the numbers. When we look at that rough estimate and actual monies, we're looking at somewhere around $11.6 million loss of revenue since the last five years. And really, this has impacted most of our minority student body as they're continuing to lag sometimes almost 20% behind the college averages. And our Hispanic students, however, are really kind of meeting that barrier point. They're kind of exceeding that flex ed student group when it comes to their student success scores. So that's one of our positives. But this is not all negative because we've been doing quite a bit of work. And some of the things that we're going to be looking at moving forward, we are starting to investigate using student support groups based upon models that have worked in the past, like brother to brother. We've been really working on putting those active learning toolkits into each of our courses through our learning management system. One of our areas that we're really looking at is how do we continue to contextualize those assignments in gateway math and in English? And one of our high points, one of the things that the state has really commented on, is how well our integrated reading and writing developmental education courses have been succeeding. So we want to continue to expand those course offerings for students. And finally, in the past few years, we've been looking at our academic pathways, and some of the most recent work is trying to make sure that we have the best math course in each one of those program pathways. Are there any questions? It's a lot of data.
Somebody else has one. I said if somebody else has a question, I'll wait.
Any other question? I have one, but you go first.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Two quick things is, while I know that you tracked that number to $11.6 million, I think we've lost way more than that. And I can tell you why I believe that, is that the most expensive programs that we have are over in the healthcare area, and all the privates have taken out all the gateway courses. So you don't need English, you don't need math and all that stuff. All day, you just take the test and you go into their nursing programs. So we have lost a ton of students that go there. So the economic impact, if we actually did a study, would show it's probably much, much, much greater, probably over $20 million worth of revenue that we've lost because we have these gateway courses. I guess my next question is, I saw the data, well, that was a comment, I'm sorry, but my question really is centered around, I saw where you looked at the state standard and what we have and what we've accomplished. But I wanted to know what success looked like. Are these students just not going in the gateway courses? Are they non-degree-seeking students that are coming? Because aren't these gateway courses, most of which are required to receive an AA degree?
The comparisons from the state, I'm going to go back to that. It was for the developmental education courses.
Yeah, for developmental ed.
Right.
But you said that they're not enrolling in the gateway programs, in the math and the...
Not immediately. So our thought was that if a student walked right in the door, so in our pathways, we really try to put English and math. And if you recollect, we actually put it in as a policy now where students have to start their English and math within a certain time frame. But prior to that, students could really pick and choose something else. So if you know that you're not really good in math, and you no longer have to go take developmental math, you might choose to take speech instead. And if I'm part-time, it might be a while before I actually walk into that class, and that's what I believe we're seeing.
So that leads me to my next question, which is, how many of these students are transferring that grade in and going online somewhere and taking that course?
Our gateway course?
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Or are taking it somewhere else and transferring it?
I do not have an answer for you, but I could certainly find that.
I mean, I'd like to know that number. I think that's key. Because you don't know whether or not, especially with the online stuff, you know, people can take these courses for you and all kinds of stuff. I just don't, I don't want us to miss the mark, and our students are graduating without equality because we've accepted it from somewhere else, or, you know, we just don't know. And it doesn't sound like, it's not anybody's fault, but I would tell you that I think we're losing this revenue because it's not our fault. I mean, it's, you know, I've had this discussion. I've been on the record, me and Senator Negron have gotten in so many fights over this particular bill. I thought it was the wrong way to go. I thought we had figured out how to get people through those, that the test that you take, the entrance exam. We found out where they were weak. We tried to build them up there, get them back, all in nine weeks or so, I think it was, right, Dr. Williams? We had a plan that was working, and then, you know, the bottom fell out of this thing. But going forward, I think that we still have to have some standards and quality. And it looks like, just who I said was going to be affected by this, the Senator Negron is. And it's the minority students that are being hurt because we are forcing them into things that they are uncomfortable with, when coupled with all the other things that they're probably dealing with outside, that have nothing to do with school but affect everything that you're doing in school. So I'd just like to know that kind of data, like, you know, what does success look like, number one? And those gateway courses, even when they start to take them. And then, two, how many of these students are bringing those courses or transferring them in from other places?
So I'm happy to find that for you. Just a couple of things to note. When you look at that SSH comparison for a gateway, it hasn't changed. So I don't think that we're actually losing students in an overall. Certainly, there's always a certain body of students. But if students really decided, hey, I'm not taking gateway math and English here, that trend line in pink on the bottom would be going down on a regular basis. It means that they would be taking it somewhere else and then coming back in.
No, I think, I hear you. I don't disagree with you. I think that people have made their mind up, when they see that they have to take those courses, that they go to Galen where they don't have to take them at all.
Understood. Got it.
They test in, right, and they meet this, whatever the number is, and if they meet that minimum standard, they can go there. They don't have to do this. That's why they go to nursing college here, because they don't have to do that at all. I am in no way, shape, or form recommending that we change our standards. But what I'm telling you is, I would imagine that we have lost so many students there because they are afraid of doing this. They're afraid that they have to pass English, and they're saying, well, what does that have to do with me being, wanting to be a nurse, right? But they don't understand, you got to write well, right? And you probably need to know a little math when somebody says CCs or something, right? So it has a lot to do with it, but I'm just saying, we probably have lost way more than that. If we were really able to poll some of those students that go to these private schools, they'll probably tell you, I would have gone there, but, and I've heard it from several students.
And when you do the comparison with some of the other colleges, the success rates are nearly nil. They're not close to our success rates.
On that exam, on the nursing exams.
Right, in order for them to actually be the nurse, you have to pass that exam.
Yeah, exactly.
And so math, you know, and those decisions have to come into play at some point. But I think that, you know, with recruitment, we might be able to explain things a little bit differently for students to understand why. Why do you have to take the math? But the biggest piece here is focusing on our underprepared students, those who need that extra help, who are foregoing the developmental work to prepare them for gateway math or writing or English to be able to do the work, and that's the challenge. Many, if you don't have to take the test, they're choosing not to take the test, and they're not succeeding. And so that's the big piece that we need to work on as a college.
Now, Dr. Williams, the last time I took this on, everybody on the board got mad at me because I said that the kids that are coming from the high schools, they have As and Bs, and they're saying, oh, they're 3.5. They are not coming to us prepared. They're not, from the school system, okay?
None of us got mad at you for saying that.
Okay, well, newspaper wrote it like everybody was mad at the school board and the superintendent or whoever was mad. But the fact is, is that we are not the public school system. We're not the 13th grade, and they have to figure out how to send us a prepared product so that... Because we're judged on what? Sending the product from here out to the workforce, right? And if they're not going prepared, I've said this for years. When Dr. Cutler was president, Dr., who was that for your mom?
Law.
No, no, not law. There was one in between, Tom Furlong and then law. I have said this for years. If you look at the Eckerd College model, and Bill, you know this to be true. I have heard from across the country, when I'm in DC, I always wonder why these young people come from Eckerd College can get jobs on the Hill. And it's because they're excellent, they are known for their writing programs. They are known to produce excellent writers, right? And they, so all I'm saying is, is that at the end of the day, we have to fix something that, you know, we're buying a bad refrigerator. I hate to describe it that way. The refrigerator comes with problems. And at some point, we got to drill down and make these other folks responsible for the product because we can't fix it any longer. We were able to fix it prior to 1720, right? So at the end of the day, we're either going to be the 13th grade for a year for some students and be happy with it and continue to lose money, or we're going to say, look, we got to up our standards, and you have to produce a better product and give it to us, a prepared product. And I can tell you right now, if I had to go to University of Florida today, I would, as a freshman, where I was when I went to University of Florida, I wouldn't have been prepared for that today. I probably wouldn't have been prepared for SBC. But the problem is that we're taking on all these other problems that are not our real issues. You know, the crux of this bill, 1720, according to Senator Negron, was that if somebody gets a high school diploma, they're supposed to be prepared to go into these math and English. And that's not the case. That's not the reality that we face. It's just not. It's not fair, but how do we fix it? I don't know. I can tell you one thing, that, you know, we need to start demanding more of the school board. And, you know, they have these meetings over there, I don't know what they're talking about, but they obviously aren't talking about quality. You know, they're talking about quantity, and they're trying to graduate these young people and push them out the door, but they're not prepared. They're not prepared to go to work. You know, we, and I fault us a little bit on this. We let them name this thing Pinellas Technical College, and these people graduate with these certificates, and then they come to us, and I have students stopping me saying, oh, I graduated from college. And I say, okay, where'd you graduate from? They say, Pinellas. It's not a college. You have no college credit when you come over to St. Pete College. You're going to be starting as a zero freshman, right? We got to stop giving all these false signals to students and other people that they are prepared. If they're not prepared, let's find out how to partner with the school system and prepare them. If they're not a college, don't make them a college. They're certificate programs. So, I mean, I hate to go on like a little rant here about it, but that's the truth. You know, this guy says, you know, we got to start. If that was the impetus for that bill, is that high school students are supposed to come to college prepared, then let's make them be responsible for their product.
So one of the things that we've been focusing on with the educational ecosystem is partnering with the school district and pulling the curriculums together to find out where the gaps are and how we can help them understand that this is where it should be, and here's where we are. And then with Pinellas Technical, we have been working with them on articulations to help make sure students do understand, here's where you are, here what comes to SBC, here what does not. And so we are working with the school district. Keep in mind, the majority of our students are not straight from high school. Many of them have been out of high school for 20 years or more. And so the learning curve is different, and we'll have to do that with more than just 18-year-olds. We are working with 30-year-olds and 40-year-olds, and we love them. That's why they're here. And so we're here to help them gain those skills to be successful. And the superintendent is open to partnering with us, and we have started working through those different gaps. And so I definitely hear what you're saying, and we are working through those. Also, the gaps between our students and workforce and being prepared for jobs in those soft skills that they want. And that's what the ecosystem is all about. It's pulling all those different partners in a room and looking at the reality of our educational system and the jobs that are available for us to work as a group on solving those problems for the residents of Pinellas. So we're in agreement that that has to change.
I would just make one other comment, and the comment is that I hear you about the older students, but typically, all the data that I've seen for the last 10 to 12 years that y'all have been showing me says that the older students typically do better on the entrance exam, number one. And number two, they tend to finish more because they prepared themselves to come back because they needed to.
They're more determined.
They're more determined. So I would venture to say that it's probably more of the younger students that we get that are facing this reality that we're talking about today. Not to, and I'm not trying to say that St. Petersburg College is not doing its part. But at the end of the day, we can only do so much. It's their product. They are K through 12, right? And when they get here, we should get most of their students. And I could tell you, I don't believe that most of the students that we get today are prepared to start at St. Pete College or any other college. We would like to, at some point, get most of their students prepared for college, if they're supposed to be at college. I mean, the ecosystem is great to formulate all this stuff, but if they're not doing their part, if there's no standards, if they're not going to do their part, then we're just fixing their problem. We'll continually be doing that. And we'll continue to put money into that. And the reason I'm bringing it up is we're talking about dollars. I mean, the best recruiting tool that we can have is, as a community. You were a mayor. As a community, when you go out and you talk to businesses across the country, and you say, I got a great school district, what happens? Executives listen because they want their kids going to the best schools, right? Now, we know that we have that at the community college level, but we're not sure about that at the K through 12. And that's a problem. That's a real concern, Dr. Williams. I'm not criticizing you or the ecosystem. I think it's a great and genius, a genius idea. But only so far that we can go to fix that problem, right?
But I think that that's, sorry for interrupting.
It's just a start.
Acknowledgement of there's work to be done, and that's what Dr. Williams has reached out to each of her counterparts in the specific areas that you've talked about to create that ecosystem and start those conversations because I don't think until now, those conversations holistically between the university, the college, P-Tech, and the school board have ever occurred on a regular basis, so. And I think it's in good part because of this board's questions on these issues and the impact of this bill. So unfortunately, it's taken us this many years to get those people around the table, so. Any other, thank you very much, Dr. Crawford. Any other questions?
Quick one, and it's probably stupid, but...
No such thing.
No questions, too. What defines a developmental math, writing, English? Do they get college credit for that?
They don't. So it's prior to that, and it's really building up those skills so that when they do walk into that gateway course, that they're prepared. It's kind of the intermediary.
Is there a state mandate that says... Is there a state mandate that sets the curriculum for developmental or... or gateway math, English?
Yes. So, all courses in Florida actually have, um, a state kind of a framework as to what those courses should include, and that's what allows transferability between institutions. We're a fortunate state in that way. So, there's, across the board, university, college, doesn't matter, the same framework.
So, there's no way to, to frame a curriculum for a developmental math, English, writing, and call it Math 101? Call it something else? Math 101? And if, that everybody goes into? And if you test high, you can go straight to Math 102? There's no way to...
What, what Senate bill, uh, what, what happened with the bill is that it determined we cannot require students to even take the test or take developmental ed if they graduated... Is it 2005?
2008.
2008. Um, if they graduated from 2008 to the current date, they do not have to take the test, and they do not have to take developmental ed. If you graduated before that, you have to take the test, and if you tested into developmental ed, you have to take it. We cannot deviate from that rule.
No.
But we have been working on, um, courses. So, a gateway course that's actually, has a co-requisite. So, rather than a three-credit course, it could be a four-credit course with has an add-on, so it's the additional support. We've worked on modularizing our courses so that students can really focus on just those parts and pieces they really need to spend the most amount of time on. We've been really looking at a wide variety of course formats in order to meet these needs, since students don't have to take it and take those. And keep in mind that these are only students who are 28 years or younger at this point, 'cause this is only, if you go back that many years, it's only 10 years. So, students graduating would've been 18, 10 years from then, you know, 2018.
So, we're adding a developmental component to the gateway curriculum?
Yep, an optional that you could take if you wanted to have that extra piece.
If you need extra help.
Trying to call it something else, but...
I think the colleges across the ne... across the state were trying to come up with exactly what you're talking about when it first came out.
Couldn't do that.
Thanks.
Dr. Crawford, could you give us... I know that the cost, revenue loss is based on credit hour. Could you give the CliffsNotes version to how, how you came up with the revenue loss? Is it because of reimbursements, or the students just are choosing not to enroll? And so, this is just based on a reduction in student enrollment generally?
Basically. So, how many students are enrolled in those courses? So, if you do, the student semester hours, three per course, and then you times it all the way through, so it's basically, it's a very, very rough estimate. I don't want, that's not a number that we can float around.
Sure. It, but it, because, based on the rest of your presentation, it's your thought that these students are just choosing not to enroll, period. They're not...
Into those gateway courses.
They're bypasses.
Okay.
So, I'm guessing that they're probably going into a humanities course or a course of interest of theirs. So, when they look at their pathway, and they say, "Here's my first four courses. I don't wanna take that math class yet. I don't have to take that English class yet. Let's try something that I'm interested in. Maybe it's government, maybe it's your first class of your program, whatever that might be."
I guess what I'm trying to just, I, I know these are just estimates, and it was just, we, we've asked you to quantify the cost, because I think intuitively, we all know it's more expensive to educate a student that's required to take dev ed and gateway courses instead of going right in. And we've asked you to put a number on that. So, I, I don't mean to be picky about where the number came from, but I just was curious, like, because if they're not taking it upon enrollment in 2017, but they are taking it two and a half years later, is that a revenue loss, or is it just a deferred revenue? And that's what I was trying to figure out.
A piece of it's definitely deferred. There's not a question of that. And, you know, I'm gonna put my two cents in that when the bill came out, the, the differences between our minority students and our all-college averages are, are, are striking. I mean, not dismal, but they are striking. At the same time, when, when, you know, the impetus behind the bill was to get college students through faster, if you have 40 or 50% of your students skipping all of the developmental and walking right in and passing, we're kind of proving their point a little bit, right?
Right.
And, and the colleges worked really hard. I mean, the, the black African-American male students started at 26% pass rates, and they're 40 again. So, we're, we're coming up with those methodologies to actually support the students getting into gateway off the bat. So, there's a piece of that to keep in mind. And I'll note, that's my personal opinion. I won't speak for anyone else.
It perhaps forced some good changes, but then, on the other hand, it has been...
Difficult in many other ways.
Unentended consequences in the past five years.
Exactly.
Anyone else? Thank you so much, Dr. Crawford. Now, Ms. McFarland. We filled in, in front of you. Alumni engagement.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam President, trustees. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come before you and to, um, report on our alumni engagement efforts. My name is Teresa McFarland, and I am the Acting Executive Director for the Foundation. St. Petersburg College has graduated over 169,000 students since its inception. So, we ask ourselves, why is it important for us to engage our alumni? Today, alumni relations is an important part of an institution's advancement activities for many reasons. Alumni are an institu... an institution's most loyal supporters. They are fundraising prospects. They generate invaluable word-of-mouth marketing among their social and professional networks. And they are great role models for current students as they start their careers. By engaging our alumni, we can improve the college experience for, for our students and develop a strong sense of pride and community for our stakeholders. We worked with the Marketing and Strategic Communications Department, along with the VP of Institutional Effectiveness and Academic Services, to develop a three-year strategic communication plan that would engage and re-engage our alumni. We started with the development of a new logo to give our alumni their own identity. Part of this plan was to ensure that going forward, we always had a presence at graduation. Starting with spring 2018, we had a table for the alumni for the first time. We were able to hand out promo items, and we also talked with our recent graduates and their family members, who were past graduates, about the benefits of joining the Alumni Association. Immediately after graduation, we sent an email from our Alumni Association Chair to the graduates, congratulating them for their accomplishments. This email also included a solicitation to, to join the Alumni Association. Typically, after graduation, we receive about five applications back from these new alumni over about a six-month period. This time around, we received 50 within the first week. We also sent an email to our alumni community, highlighting the graduation with a solicitation also to join the Alumni Association. And from that, we received 32 individuals who joined the Alumni Association. Capitalizing on our recent success in the email communications, we sent out an email on behalf of Dr. Williams to our employees, who are also alumni. We currently have about 36,000 email addresses for our alumni in our database. This is an affordable way for us to communicate and get information out to our alumni and keep them involved with the college. We conducted, we conducted a survey in April with our alumni and learned that about 87% of those who responded didn't know that SPC had an alumni association. So, what did we learn? We learned that it is valuable to communicate with our alumni when they are active at stu... as students. So, what we did is the, we came up with a way, a communication plan for, um, for engaging them. First, starting at 45 credits, we began to engage the alumni with relevant, timely, and personalized communications. Step two, after graduation, we invite our new alumni to join the Alumni Association. Step three, the active engagement. We then continue to engage them through newsletters, social media, an alumni community portal, and on-campus events and activities. And last, the solicitation. Our goal would be to keep our alumni engaged until such a time in which we can move them from annual members of the Alumni Association to annual donors. The SPC magazine has been redesigned to include an alumni and donor story in each issue, and a call to action, be it join the Alumni Association or support an initiative. For the younger generation, social media is the preferred place for social engagement with family, friends, organizations, such as your college and your university. We launched our LinkedIn, um, account in 2013, but it was not engaging for our alumni. So, we revamped our LinkedIn page in 2016. Our new LinkedIn page gives our alumni a portal to engage with other alumni, current students, staff, and faculty. We also provide job postings for our local businesses that reach out to us to advertise their openings and events of interest to our past alumni. On September 14th, we launched the Alumni Association Facebook page. During the first days of launching this page, we, um, put up a welcome video, which received over 50 views. Excuse me, 500 views. We would work closely with the marketing department to ensure that the information posted on this site promotes the college and continues to engage our alumni. On October 2nd, we held our very first event. It was our Alumni Mixer, which was hosted by Great Bay Distributors. And this was the first of a series of special events and activities for our alumni and current students. We were thrilled with the outcome of this event, and we had alumni that showed up ranging in age from 21 years to 81 years. So, when we're looking at the Alumni Association membership, we started in January with 296 members. With that 296 members, for the last few years, that has been our sweet spot. But being able to engage them in other ways, as of today, we stand at 2,156 members. That is a 628% increase since January of this year. For us, that is amazing. Our work is still not done. We are gonna continue to work through it, because we are up for the challenge. Our current database, as I said before, we have about 36 active email addresses. But we also have about 79,000 current records that do not have good email addresses, physical addresses, and phone numbers. So, we'll be working with a company by the name of Alumni Sync, because we would like to locate those lost alumni and begin to engage them. We would be ready for this, um, this second phase sometime in February 2019. Any questions?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That's amazing. Thank you so much. Working with, um, the marketing department and my team, they just did a great job at moving this forward. So, it wasn't just them two. So, thank you.
Good job. Absolutely. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on, Ms. Hunt. Our monthly budget report.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Williams. This morning, I bring you the report for the first quarter of fiscal year 1819. First, looking at our student tuition, we brought in $26.8 million in all of our student tuition and fees at approximately 44% of our budgeted amount. Last fiscal year, I started showing you this chart of our tuition revenue projections. The red line is our budgeted amount at $50.7 million. The blue line is the projection of where we feel will end in tuition at the end of the fiscal year. Right now, for fiscal year 1819, we had a target amount. The target percentage, we came up about 2.4% higher than that target. That equates to about $500,000. This is assuming that we meet our goal for spring and summer enrollment. Next, our state funding at $13.7 million. Our other revenues at $749,000. You see the difference in prior fiscal year to this fiscal year is a little lower. That's due to timing, so you'll see in the next report that that'll even out. Overall revenue for the quarter is $41.3 million. Next, focusing on our expenditures, our personnel and benefits total at $27 million, which is a little under 25% of our budgeted amount. Current expense, $6.9 million, and capital, $641,000. Our total expense operating at $34.7 million. If we look at our revenue minus our expenditures, we're at about $6.6 million. Um, just keeping in mind that when we look at this, we receive our revenue in about three increments of the year for fall, spring, and summer. Fall about 44%, spring at about 40%, and our summer at about 16%. So, we'll see this balance level out throughout the year, because our expenditures are more evenly distributed. Any questions on the first quarter report? Thank you.
Next, we have our personnel report. Were there any questions of the board members based on the report? And if not, um, I need a motion to approve, please. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Moving on. Uh, we have a consent agenda. We can take that as one, or if the board members have an... You're welcome to ask questions on any of the items, or pull any of the items off if you desire.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, direct support organizations. We have the audits that we need to receive and approve for the St. Petersburg Foundation, St. Pete College Foundation, I think it's supposed to say. Uh, Leaper Ratner Museum of Art, and the Institute of Strategic Policy Solutions. Uh, you received each of the audits with your, um, package and hopefully reviewed. All were clean audits. Any questions with respect to any of the audits?
I reviewed them. I didn't see any red flags. I think one else did. But I'll move that we approve, uh, all three audits, A, B, and C?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And informational reports are included in your packages. Did anybody have, if you had any questions? Um, there's no changes to the manual. And, Dr. Williams, your president's report.
All right. So, in front of you, you have, um, a small document about Amendment 7. This is, um, the People's Amendment. It talks about our first responders and beneficiaries for our first responders. But it also talks about support for the local boards for, um, state and community colleges, that we maintain the local board leadership from people who live in the community and lead the institutions. And so, needless to say, the Florida college system, um, and I myself personally, I am very much in favor of Amendment 7. And so, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at all of the amendments, but, um, Amendment 7 is something that the Florida college system, we are supporting. Um, it maintains local control. It also places the Florida colleges in the Constitution. We're the only, um, educational entity that's not in the Constitution. The state universities are, the public school systems are, we are not. And so, we're in favor of that. And so, over the next couple of weeks, we'll be spending more time with our legislative delegation. Um, we're trying to entertain them at the college as well as visit them, um, each and every one of them in their offices to make sure we, we get things moving. We've put together our legislative ask, and, uh, we'll be forwarding that to the board to take a look at. And we're starting to push our agenda forward for the upcoming year. Um, we are definitely not going quietly into the night. Um, we are asking for $4 million for the college, and we'll be moving forward on that ask. And that's my report.
Any questions for Dr. Williams? Any other questions? Yes? Can we, how, how can we best help with this? I mean, social media, putting our own opinions out? What can we do to move the needle?
We could. We could, um, the Florida college system has given us sort of a roadmap, and I'll send that out about, um, with some documents and some things that you could post. Um, but we're definitely in favor of the Florida colleges being in the Constitution. So we'll send that to you. We can send that out.
Okay.
That would be very helpful.
But if I do a publisher of a magazine, that might help.
I don't know, you know.
Who's working on the December issue, so it's too late.
Too late, yeah. It's too late. All right.
Um, and with that, we'll adjourn, but don't stand up because we're going to re-adjourn as the trustees for the, uh, Saint Petersburg Collegiate High School. Ms. Matt.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Williams. I'm Star Lametz, the principal of Saint Petersburg Collegiate High School. Thank you for the opportunity to present the SPCHS audit for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, student data and goals, and an update on the progression of Saint Petersburg Collegiate High School North Pinellas at our Tarpon Springs campus. Each of you received a copy of the audit. I'm pleased to inform you that there were no recommendations or findings. Do you have any questions for me?
Move approval. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go.
Thank you very much. The data on the next few slides will provide an understanding of the students that we serve at Saint Petersburg Collegiate High School, and I'll also be talking about the goals that we have established for the year. If you take a look at the table one, um, you will see the percentage of male and female students, and we tend to serve almost twice as many females as males. And, um, I suspect that is because a lot of our males really enjoy participating in sports and love the football games at their Pinellas County, um, zone schools, and so they're a little reluctant to come into the collegiate high school. We do have several athletes that do, um, participate in sports, both club and at their zone schools, um, but to be honest, it is demanding, um, to be able to, um, handle the rigors of being an athlete, especially in a sport such as football, and the rigors of our program. The second slide or table, um, will talk to you a little bit about our ethnicity. We are consistent in terms of the students that we are attracting over time. I'm hopeful with the new school, especially because we have a large Hispanic population close to the Clearwater Campus, that Saint Petersburg Collegiate Har- High School at Tarpon Springs will have a more diverse student body. That said, diversity is very important to our team and to our students and to our families. And we try very hard to ensure that we are reaching all of our students in Pinellas County. And we do that few, through a few things. First of all, when we hold our information sessions, we select a diverse group of parents and students to present. We also have student ambassadors that are there in case students would like to ask an informal question, um, student to student. We also are mindful of promoting and highlighting our ethnicities, um, our diverse student body in all of our print materials, our brochures, on our website, on our Facebook page. And then finally, we really strive to create a warm, welcoming, and inviting, uh, uh, family culture at the collegiate high school. So when our prospective students come to tour the high school, they feel welcome. They feel like they could be a part of our family-like community. And they're, if they're a little bit hesitant, um, hopefully that will give them the courage to apply, um, to the high school program. If you look at the very last line of the table, you'll see that we also serve a nice percentage of students who are economically disadvantaged and qualify for free reduced lunch. Um, this year's percentage has not quite yet been determined because there's an application process. However, I anticipate we'll probably have about twenty-nine to thirty percent of our students qualifying for free or reduced lunch. This is especially important because these students often are also first-generation students. And by giving them the opportunity to participate and attend Saint Petersburg Collegiate High School and Saint Petersburg College, not only are we giving them that AA degree, but if they also earn the Bright Future Scholarship and stay in-state, they pretty much have a back laureate degree at no or little cost to them. And this truly is transforming not only their life, but the lives of their family.
Please, go back to the.
Yes, sir.
Is that always more?
Yes, sir.
Okay, really, I need to draw a map.
Oh, I forgot to mention something. Shouldn't it add up to a hundred percent? Thank you for asking that question.
So I don't?
It is not you. Okay, so, Pinellas County Schools, when, um, parents register their children, allow them to identify more than one ethnicity. So what is really difficult when you look at our data is it will never, ever add up to a hundred percent. So it is not you. I apologize, I failed to mention that in my remarks. Thank you, Trustee Foster.
May I ask another baseline question? We talk a lot about our need of diversity, which is obvious. But just going back, what, what are the demographics of Pinellas County? I've heard them, South Pinellas, North Pinellas, but these are county wides. This is a county-wide report, so I'm wondering, does anybody know?
I can provide that for you. I don't have it with me today, um, and I didn't put it in the presentation. We are close, but not exact. So we do benchmark against the diversity data for the entire county, um, for the school district, and we are a little higher in white, um, so we're a little more white than, than the rest of the, um, district. Um, we're fairly close on our, um, our Asian, and then it's in the ballpark, but not as high as I'd like it to be for the other ethnicities.
I don't, I ask that because we constantly beat ourselves up about diversity, but I think we also need to somewhat put it in perspective to our county demographics and because I know that we talk about strategies.
Yep.
And having that information would help me strategically think of ways that, to address it perhaps, that we're not dealing with now. I don't, I don't know if it would help any of you all, but I, I think that that information would, would help.
I'd be happy to provide that to you.
The other thing, Madam Chair, if we stay within the demographic, if it looks like the, the community that we're serving, so like the Saint Pete Collegiate one in the south, if it looks like Saint Pete, Saint Pete's demographic, then we should be okay. Same thing with the north, we should be okay.
Eventually, yes. So right now, the high school is serving countywide, even though it's located in Saint Pete, but I would venture to guess Saint Pete's demographics look different than this.
Oh, yeah.
So once we open the north county school, I, I hope that it will start to.
Even itself out.
Yeah. And that's what I'm hoping. I'm hoping that once we open the second school, um, that it will balance, and we will be able to serve more of our black, um, students in Saint Petersburg in particular. Right now, with the limited spots and the random lottery process, it's blind. And so, you know, if we have more white students apply, then they have a better chance of getting in. Um, thank you to Sabrina Crawford, who just gave me the diversity data.
Oh, thank you.
And so, our white is eighty-two point seven percent, black or African-American, eleven point one percent, American Indian, point four percent, Asian is three point six percent, Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander is zero point one percent, two or more races is two point two percent, Hispanic or Latino is nine point seven percent, and white alone, not Hispanic or Latino, is seventy-four point two percent. If that's helpful. Thank you very much. What a team.
Thank you.
Any other questions about table two before I go forward?
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Student success is also measured, um, by our graduation rate, and I'm very proud of our team. We have consistently had a hundred percent high school graduation rate for the past eight years. Um, the graduation rate for Pinellas County Schools, um, last year was eighty-two point nine percent, and for the state, it was eighty-two point three percent. They're working very hard to get their graduation rates up and should be commended for that. Our average AA graduation rate for the last eight years has been ninety-seven percent. We also measure success by the percentage of students who are earning an A, B, or C in a college course. Um, if you take a look at the second table, you will see our students' performance over time. I was pleased to see that if we look at the two thousand sixteen-seventeen compared to the seventeen-eighteen school year, in the fall term, we had an increase of two percent in our students' performance, and in the spring term, three point one percent increase, which I attribute to the tutoring that we offer at the collegiate high school and our students consistently using the wonderful resources provided by Saint Petersburg College. Student success is also, also measured by Pinellas County Schools each year through goals, goals that are, um, established in collaboration with a consultant provided by Pinellas County Schools. These goals are aligned to our vision and mission and are approved by the Pinellas County Schools. As you review our goals up there for this school year, um, you might notice that the targets of ninety percent seem a little low based on the data you just saw. And there's a reason for that. The reason is, is that we must meet or exceed these goals. If we don't meet or exceed these goals, then we are in trouble with Pinellas County Schools. So they are purposefully a little lower than we anticipate our students will meet. One of the goals that you might, um, be interested in is goal number four, and that is that our sophomores are college-ready. So when our sophomores come in in grade ten, in order to stay in the program, they must pass all sections of the PERT, and they must have an unweighted GPA of three point oh, and our students consistently do that. And then also, our students do very well on the Florida Standard Assessment for English Language Arts. At the end of the year, uh, the consultant will review our data, and he will give us a report that will be provided to the Pinellas County School Board indicating how well we did on our goals. And I'm pleased to indicate that last year, we had a great report. Next up is the progression of Saint Petersburg Collegiate High School North Pinellas at the Tarpon Springs Campus. So we've been working very hard, and plans are progressing nicely for the new school. We did apply for a charter school program grant, or CSP grant. Uh, we have completed stage one, which included a written application and then an interview process. Thank you, Trustee Cole, for being a part of that interview team, and thank you to the rest of the team members. I certainly appreciate your participation. We were hoping today that we would be notified that we are eligible for stage two. Uh, with the hurricane, we're not sure. I've been checking my email and no word yet, but as soon as we find out, we will let you know. If we are invited to apply for stage two, we will submit additional written information and a detailed budget. And if we would be funded, it would be five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help open Saint Petersburg Collegiate High School North Pinellas. So we're keeping our fingers crossed. Um, October to November, um, and November to January, we're beginning to market the program to our students and families, and we're doing this in a variety of ways. We're updating the Saint Petersburg Collegiate High School website to, um, highlight both schools. We are putting information out on our Facebook page, and we'll be mailing postcards and letters inviting our, um, prospective students to apply to the program and attending information session. We will hold five formal information sessions, Tarpon, Clearwater, Seminole, Saint Petersburg, Gibbs, and all state, and as many one-on-one and small group sessions as we need to, to ensure that all interested students can apply for the program. In February and through March, we will have our application deadline, which is February eighth. So after February eighth, we will know exactly how many students, um, will be at each school. If we need to continue to recruit students, we will do so. Um, the deadline we're setting for their acceptance is March first. Then January through April, we'll go ahead and post, um, the positions in collaboration with the Human Resources Department, beginning with the principal position, and then following with faculty. If we would need to adjust the staffing plan, that certainly can be done because we will have our numbers in place prior to hiring anybody. And then finally, uh, May and June, we will finish all of our facility preparations, and in July, we will make sure that all of the textbooks, materials, and technology are in place so that we are ready to open by the beginning of August, and we hope to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony and a grand opening for the new school. Do you have any questions for me?
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, um, just a couple of things. One, um, again, on our diversity, I learned at Dr. Williams', uh, chamber talk on Friday, uh, through other ancillary conversations, that the Hispanic Outreach Center, uh, for North Pinellas is located on our Tarpon campus. And so, I hope that that's a wonder, good opportunity for marketing the high school as well to those participants at the Hispanic Outreach Center. And I was thrilled to learn that it was located at Tarpon, so thank you, Professor Davis. It was great. Um, and then the second thing for my fellow board members, I did get to participate in the Department of Education grant, um, interview process, and it was really interesting and, uh, kudos to Ms. Metz and Katie and her team with the grant preparation, and those who attended and their response, it was, um, really a wonderful team effort, but something that I took away that I want to do a better job of, and I'm just sharing with you all of my own personal challenges, one of the very specific questions that was asked was our role in governance with respect to the high school. And very often, when we're talking about this in conjunction with our board meetings, uh, we're thinking about the college as a whole and what a wonderful program this is in, um, the confines of the college. And not, uh, that we don't focus on the fact that it's an independent high school and associated with that, but it really highlighted, um, the shift of our, of our interest and our focus to what are we doing for high school students, period, irrespective of Saint Petersburg College, let alone why we think this is such a good fit for the college strategically, and kind of putting those hats on and off. I hadn't focused on that until we were sitting in that interview, and, and I just wanted to share with you all, um, that aha moment that I had, and I appreciate being a part of that as well, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
So, Dr. Williams and I had a conversation yesterday because Saint Petersburg Collegiate High School North Pinellas, which is what is in the application, is a mouthful. And so, um, she has, um, approved that we can call it Saint Petersburg Collegiate High School at the Tarpon Springs Campus, and then we will refer to the current high school as Saint Petersburg Collegiate High School at the Saint Petersburg Gibbs Campus. This allows us to do a couple of things. First of all, it identifies the location where the high school is housed. And second of all, we're going to share one website and one Facebook page, and so as we go forward with marketing the new school, what I really hope occurs is they see us as one school, two campuses, even though we will be two separate schools, because we really want to blend those two schools. We're going to, uh, we hope to blend the faculty, um, we want to do a lot of collaborative team building and training, we want opportunity for the faculty to go back and forth between the campuses to observe, observe their counterparts and learn from each other. And so, um, we would also like some opportunity for the students to get together and get to know each other. So it really fits the vision of one school, two campuses, and also to ensure that we have an exact replication, which is what we promised in our application. Um, so we are going to start referring, and I didn't want to refer too much to it today because we've called it North Pinellas all along, um, but we are going to start calling it Saint Petersburg Collegiate High School at Tarpon Springs.
Thank you so much for all the work that you've done, and this is going to be fun. I can't wait. I, I feel like Christmas is already here, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your support.
I also want to make one more comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I also want to thank everyone who helped with the, um, is it raising the roof or topping it off ceremony for, um, Joseph H. Lang Student Success Building at Gibbs. It was a beautiful, um, event. I cannot tell you how many, um, people provided feedback about how great that was, and so I want to thank publicly Lima Construction, um, Johnson Stanton and his work, um, and then the college family who has been, um, significantly involved in that, Diana Wright, um, I know Jackie did some work, marketing, um, several folks, I just want to thank you for that. It was a great ceremony. And the Lang family, they, they're just over it. They're, they're like, I can't believe this happened, it was wonderful. And so, I want to thank everyone who did, who did, uh, participate, those who came, and it was hot out there, and so I'm very grateful that you came and signed the beam. Um, it was very important, and so I, I wanted to say that, I forgot it.
Thank you. Any other business to come before the board of Saint Petersburg Collegiate High School? With there being no other business, we will adjourn. Thank you.